It was like next minute, now I just sit down if I ain't here.
Hey, thanks for coming tonight, everybody. We're gonna start the meeting with the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we'll start with the approval of the agenda. Anything, Dan?
I have no additions.
Dwayne, no additions?
Ryan?
No.
Okay, I've got a couple here. Under J1, a pay estimate, so that's under the engineers' report for the pay estimate that's at your desk there for the water tower. Um, under I4, city administrators' report, the ballot language for November. And I5, a quote for some paving at the cemetery. So with those additions, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Make the motion to approve.
Thanks, Ryan. Do I have a second? Thanks, Mel. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under the consent agenda, any questions for administration on consent agenda?
I'll move to approve.
Thanks, Dwayne. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Dan. All in favor, State Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, visitors of the council. Mr. Gordon was at.
Thank you, Mayor, administrators, city council. My name's Patrick Gordon. I'm the executive director. Whoops, I'm a little tall for this, I think. Uh, for Zumba Education District, we're kind of the new kids in town here in Casson. So thought it'd be a great time just to kind of appear, I guess we could say. I met a few of you and we're looking forward to a great partnership. I've met with the KM Lions. Um, we've had a lot of great discussions with Dodge County and we'd love to be great partners with the city of Casson and being involved. Um, I'm handing out and more for the public is we're gonna have a, as you know, we have a brand-new facility um, right by Holy Family Church, right there on 57. Um, and we're gonna have an open house here on September 6th. You're all welcome. Hopefully, you guys can make it and should be a pretty big event for us. Um, if you're not familiar with Zumba Education District, we are a K-12 public school district, but we serve six um, member districts, including Casson, Manorville. We've been around for thirty years and we've been nomadic. So we've actually been in Casson at the old elementary school. We've been in Dodge Center, Stewartville. Um, we've had kind of unique spaces. So for us to get a brand-new sixty-one thousand square-foot facility, um, that's a once-in-a-thirty-year lifetime for us. That just doesn't happen for us. Um, and these are students that we serve, our special ed students, at-risk students from our six communities. Um, these are students that really cannot function in mainstream environments. They come to us. So it's really a specialized facility. Um, we're gonna have probably congressmen showing up to our open house. It's just a unique, unique um, kind of event for us. And so I just wanted to say thank you to the city of Casson. Thank you. We just have so much support and it's been a big deal for us. So what I did too is I threw up, not threw up, I threw up some pictures here. Um, so that's kind of what it's looking like right now. Um, I always use the term "summer slam" and now I know what that really means right now. Um, it's uh, if you knew about our history, we were formerly in Byron and we had three separate sites. And now we're all under one roof. Um, and it was a pretty big undertaking. We totally sold two of our sites and leased another one. So in this market to sell, um, and also to be under budget and on time, we just hit the sweet spot. If we would've done this probably six months ago or six months later, um, we'd be struggling. So that's our site right now. Um, in a lot of, we're gonna have to hire a window cleaner, so if you guys know that. Um, a big thing of this is a two-story site, sixty-one thousand square feet. Um, it's around about six acres of land. Um, we, this is our cafeteria. So it looks very unique to us because there's a big steps there that's kind of a focal point. Our students can't really sit at lunch for thirty minutes. So the stairs kind of function as another spot for these students to kind of function, to sit. It's another big group thing because we have trainings for all six of our member districts. And there's a big screen that comes down and so we can have big group events. That conference room up left, we use that sunup to sundown. The regional, uh, we have a lot of regional trainings. Um, our old conference room could seat maybe thirty people, that's sixty-five. On bottom left, um, that's an open space conference room. We turned that into a staff mental health space because our staff, um, their student staff communicate with their behavior. So they get bloody, they go to the hospital, they do those types of things. And our staff really struggle. So that's kind of a space for them to kind of, um, go to. So it's a huge, a really unique design. Um, that's a hallway in our setting four. Um, notice how wide there are. There's no lockers. Again, our kids, their bubble, um, is probably three or four times your normal mainstream students. So, um, we just didn't have space for it. Our setting four previously was a great building, but it was a builder showcase building. We had classrooms as small as four hundred square feet. Um, these are eight hundred square feet and we are prepared for expansion. And we are actually starting to enroll them as you can speak. So you kind of see some of the classrooms. Um, storage is a big thing. So you can see floor-to-ceiling chemistry. We have a lot of adults in the building with trainings from the region. So that's an outdoor on the bottom left there. Little space for them to eat lunch and that's that big screen. So that's another big group event. We will have all the specialized uh, staff from the six member districts now come to Zed. We usually had to find gym space or rent a space, those types of things. Another thing is, we've never really had a gym. So this is eight thousand one hundred square-foot gym. Seats about three hundred people. Those stands are pretty cool. You put a wand in. I just learned this. It goes choo-choo-choo-choo. So, um, and then we have a little divider there. So our kids, uh, we don't have a gym teacher. Our special ed staff and our ALC staff really run gym classes. But that's used sunup to sundown. We're gonna have leasing opportunities. We can have a graduation here. We have science fair for all our six member districts. Um, so it's a beautiful-looking gym for us. So we need things. We have basketball hoops behind back. We've never had an art room. So bottom right, that's a full-size art room. Bottom left, that's our ALC on the second floor. So our ALC students, we can actually teach out in the hallway or if that's a high school. Lot of width, lot of window. Um, we have kids that on the top left, that's a eight hundred square-foot sensory room. That's a climbing wall. So we have kids that can't even leave one classroom to the other without some sort of sensory pieces. So that's just another unique kind of deal there. We've got a right turn lane. You guys are very familiar with that. Whoops. We have a fax room. Uh, we just developed a partnership with Dodge County. As you guys know, they're developing some sort of nature preserve. So we're almost like right across the street from them. So that's pretty cool to us. Um, and then we have a staff lounge. And this, uh, the top, the two on the left, we have itinerant staff, occupational therapists, um, physical therapists, deaf or hard of hearing teachers that go out to the member districts. We have about thirty of those staff. Um, we're not gonna do individual offices for them. So they have a shared office space um, and collaborative space that really uses our space well. And they can actually team to talk about those kids and actually have a home base. As you can see, we are overpackers. So there's a lot of unpacking to be done and hopefully throwing out stuff. And I think that is, that is it. So, um, Tuesday, September 6th, uh, September 6th is our open house from five to seven. We're gonna have a ribbon-cutting ceremony. Um, we hope to see you guys out there. Certainly drop by anytime. We are welcome. Open doors and I'm happy to come back anytime, answer questions, have some people with me, whatever. We're excited to be in Casson. I'm excited for this opportunity. It'll probably be the only time in Zed's history, so it's.
I saw a picture of a kitchen in there. Um, what are you doing for food service up there?
Uh, so this is a fax room on the second floor.
On the left-hand side there, it looks like a kitchen though.
Yep, yep. It's a, uh, kind of like a high school, a fax, industrial-stamped kitchen. So there's like teaching, there's like a mirror for teaching and most things. Um, we have another program called Transition to Success and it's eighteen to twenty-one. They do a lot of cooking and independent skills. But that's also another leasing opportunity. And so that's a revenue piece and that helps our member districts. If someone wanted to rent that. We're not there yet though, so I'm not gonna advertise that quite yet, but, um, yeah.
Any other questions?
And please follow our social media and a lot of things happening with us right now, so.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Good luck this fall.
I'll just leave these, I guess, public if they want.
Thanks, Patrick. Appreciate it. Okay, on to committee reports. Plaza fifty-seven daycare conditional use permit. F1.
Uh, so including your package, you've got a number of items that were reviewed at the the planning and zoning meeting held on Monday evening. Um, relatively straightforward. Um, you can read through the staff report here. And actually, I'm gonna have Ian kind of run through it a little bit for us as well. He worked on this with Brad. Um, and I wanna make sure that he has the opportunity to do that. But it is a eighty-four slot facility. To me, it's gonna bring that Plaza fifty-seven to full capacity. I know the planning and zoning had a number of questions and things that they ran through and they can certainly highlight that. But, um, overall, we did feel like it was a positive for the community. It's a pull factor for the community. It brings people into town. It'll increase the foot traffic and that, um, so it has an economic development aspect as well. So, go ahead, Ian. If you wanna run through your staff report?
Yes, so. So yeah, like Tim mentioned, this is at the Plaza fifty-seven area. And the daycare, when constructed, will serve eighty-four students and sixteen staff. Um, so some of the things that we've been talking to with Brad Clemens have to do with the play area, which will be located kind of on the south side of the building. Um, they've sized that at thirty-five hundred square feet. So according to what's in our ordinances, that would be adequate in size based on what it says there and the occupancy load for students. Other things that we've had discussions about as planning staff have to do with the circulation. Um, just considering the number of businesses that are already in that Plaza fifty-seven area. You know, you've got the ice cream place, the newspaper, there's a bank with a drive-through, the coffee shop with drive-throughs. We were just having discussions about what the additional traffic because of the daycare would add. So we've asked for a traffic circulation plan which has been submitted. And one of the conditions that we've added on there is that the traffic circulation plan would be resubmitted with the added signage that would designate. There's like three different spaces in front of the entrance to the daycare. Uh, and those would be reserved for pickup and drop-up of students that are coming and going.
Why don't you run through the, uh, the criteria that the planning and zoning added as the factors? So findings in fact, and then also that last component of the report.
So we find that the proposed conditional use meets all of the applicable specific public, social, and healthcare issues as listed in our ordinances. It's not in conflict with our comprehensive plan. And it's consistent with the chapter one fifty-four zoning of the city code and the purposes of the C2 general business district. The use will not cause traffic hazards and the traffic generated by the proposed use can be safely accommodated on existing or planned street systems. And the existing public roads providing access to the site will not need to be upgraded or improved by the city in order to handle the additional traffic generated by the use. The proposed use will not impede the normal and orderly development or improvements of the surrounding property. The proposed use will not be injurious to the use and the enjoyment of other property in the neighborhood and will not significantly diminish or impair the values of the property. And finally, the use will not disrupt the character of the neighborhood.
Thanks, Ian. Any questions for Ian on that? Or any other comments from planning and zoning members?
Uh, I think the, one of the main topics that we discussed was the play area. Uh, whether it was adequate in size. It is expandable, um, if need be. Um, but Mr. Clemens was in attendance at the meeting and he stated per their licensures, um, the age groups of the kids using the play area, whether it be infants, toddlers, or somewhere in between, um, they are segregated when they use that. So they, they all can't be used in it at the same time. The other, uh, one component that was raised was, uh, security. And that's also part of the, um, not only security, but safety of kids, you know, running out into the parking lot. And also part of the licensure, they're required to go in and out of a door. So they're checking in and checking out. So, um, that was addressed too.
He did say that he wouldn't, they didn't think they'd be at full capacity for maybe two years.
Sure.
It would just take time to.
Wrap it up.
This is the third daycare that he's got.
Sure.
He know, he's knows all the rules and he's, so.
Well, meets our ordinance and they'll have to meet their licensure, square footage, so.
Um, our ordinance does say that an outdoor play area shall be provided that contains at least forty square feet per student enrolled at the facility. So if you do forty square feet times eighty-four students, I believe that's three thousand three hundred and sixty square feet. So his proposal is thirty-five hundred square feet. So as far as our ordinances go, I would say that's adequate.
Outdoor space?
Correct. The play area?
South side.
Yeah, the south side.
All that grass area.
Yep.
It'll be all fenced down and.
Yeah, so here's the map of it. So you can see that, um, that playground area will be here on the south side. There's an access door right here on the south side of the building. Um, and I did talk to him during the, the, the public hearing. I asked him about that, if it would be possible to expand that. And, um, he indicated that if necessary, they could expand it. I think one thing, you know, Dwayne brought up, or maybe it was Dan, was making sure that all the equipment is very much free of the fencing because we don't want there to be any kind of safety issue. And he was, you know, Brad Clemens, uh, the owner of Plaza fifty-seven, as Ian stated, has got two of these others. So they're gonna be using, um, the person who's actually operating owns a facility in Rochester. So they're very cognizant of that, so.
And they were gonna, and they're, they realize that there could be traffic issue and they're working with the plan. Plus they're also looking at way to deter people from driving fast.
One thought they, one thought they had, I think, on this access here, maybe Dan, you brought that up, was possibly putting some kind of speed bump or something along that.
On the north side.
To slow people down because, you know, the circulation plan includes folks coming in off of fifty-seven and then coming down and dropping off right along here. And we wanna make sure that that passenger side of the vehicle aligns with the front entrance of this, you know, facility, which would make sense for the children. But most of the traffic flow kind of is on the south side, or be the southeast part of the parking lot where the new coffee shop is. So it shouldn't directly impact the, the kids right here. So.
Okay. Alright, any other comments or questions for Ian? Okay, entertain a motion to approve the resolution for the conditional use permit.
I'd make that motion.
Thanks, Dan. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Dwayne. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, guys. Uh, number two, the guard fence conditional use permit.
And this is another relatively straightforward one, but it's one of the first ones we've had under our new process for doing fences on the property lines. So, um, and this is all coming from the fact that we had some inconsistencies with neighbors. We had some neighbors disputing things and, uh, one of our previous planning and zoning members had indicated that in the course of his business, he does concrete work. Um, he had found that often when he's installing concrete for, uh, folks when they're doing their driveway or something like that, he's finding that people have built into the neighboring properties. So what the planning and zoning and the council had authorized was to do a process where we notify the property owners around in the area and it's just more transparent. So it does mean there are a few more hoops to go through at the outset, beginning of the process. But after that's completed, we find that it, it's much more straightforward because everyone has a chance to be aware of what's going on. So anyways, um, you've got your staff report in your packet. Um, and I think the applicant's here tonight. So if you'd like to speak to this at all, go right ahead.
Sure. Uh, the process has been pretty smooth, getting it all set. Um, we had one, I guess you would say hiccup with it, is one of the neighbors is on an extended month-long vacation. He, I did get ahold of him. He did sign and forwarded. Um, we have it with the office. Name's Brian. He's got it all set and he said he would come back and notarize his signature when he returns. Uh, everybody else has done the notarizing and everything is approved. But he has verbally emailed and now written approval, um, that he's okay with it. Uh, other than that, it's been a good process that I agree that this should be a necessary step.
Good, thank you. And this gets recorded, right?
Yeah, I'll do these recommendations here and that's, that's a big part of it is. Um, the fence is not gonna encroach beyond the front of the house. So as you're well aware, we don't allow those fences typically in the front yard.
Right.
Unless they're a decorative fence. So a six-foot fence wouldn't be allowed. Um, it's not gonna exceed the six-foot height. Um, these access agreements are gonna be notarized and recorded with the property owners to the south, north, and west. So the fence can be placed in the property line. So that means that not only will he have the CUP on his own property, he'll also have those access agreements. So that in the future, if someone purchases the home, they'll, they'll be well aware of that when they buy the home. It'll be part of their title work when they buy it. So we think that'll provide that transparency. And then the property owner also acknowledged that the fence is in a utility easement. And if necessary, the, uh, utility department could access this if it was required. It might, there might be damage or it might have to be removed or partially removed. So, um, we found that the findings of fact here, it's not in conflict with the comprehensive plan. Uh, use is not gonna cause any traffic hazards. It's not gonna impede normal and orderly development. Um, it's not going to be injurious to the use and enjoyment of the property. And it's not gonna disrupt the character of the neighborhood. So, uh, planning and zoning, after having the public hearing, did have a positive recommendation for the council as well.
Okay. Any questions from council? Ryan or Mel? No, okay. Thanks for going through that process. I know it stinks to have another process, but this has been a thorn.
I think it's a benefit.
A thorn at our side for a long time as far as disputes that come up after the property changes hands. And just gonna save the city a lot of attorney fees.
Yeah, we had good discussion and we come to a resolution that this is the proper way to move forward with it.
Okay.
The only hiccup on this was the notary. Um, but that said, if we've got documentation of the email from him, I'm okay waiting on that until the notary gets accomplished.
Yeah, we've got that, so.
It was in discussion in P&amp;Z. We did determine that we can let people know. If we get a timeframe from them, we can start the process of them getting it notarized beforehand. So even if it's approved or not, it ain't hurting nothing to have it. So it's, we're learning, the public's learning. I think it's gonna be a good process.
Good, thank you. And thanks for your feedback too. Appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah. I think I talked to you about that earlier today, that, that would be just as somebody who's gone through the process now, if that was upfront, that would've helped and I think made it even, an even better process, for sure.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions or comments? Entertainer motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Dwayne. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passes. And the old business number one, ordinance changing liquor ordinance to include the word "public."
Can I ask just a clarification question? So we are okay? You proceed? Okay. And then I will reach out to Brian and make sure he comes by. Okay.
Perfect. Yep, thank you. Have a good night.
Linda, thank you.
Uh, so this was something that, uh, council had made a choice on, I don't know, maybe about a month ago. And so we wanted to just make sure that it was, uh, done officially in the, uh, the ordinances, the code of ordinances. So this is the official, uh, um, write-up that will become, uh, be published and become part of the code. And it was in case in point, uh, for the, the new brewery. But it would apply for, for any kind of a situation, uh, that we would have, so.
I'll move to approve.
Thanks, Dwayne. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Mel. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Are we gonna run into any issues if a business were to wanna go across the street from the high school? Sell alcohol at that facility?
Or is that within three hundred feet?
Five hundred feet.
Five hundred feet.
I mean, it's possible. I mean, at that time, we would have to take into account if a business chose to, if it, you know, I, if it was a bar, for example, or something like that, you might run into that, absolutely, yeah.
They just have to make sure they're five hundred feet away. Yep. Okay, topic of the year. Number two under G, cannabis legislation discussion. Um, so, so we're just looking, like we talked at the last meeting, come back. If you have any questions, comments, anything. There's nothing actionable tonight. Um, there is a draft ordinance there for a moratorium. Um, so that's just a draft of what some other communities have been using. So any comments or questions that anybody has specifically?
I, I would like to see us, before we take any action, check with the county. Cause some counties are taking care of that at the county level. And if they're gonna take that upon themselves, we don't wanna be redundant or do something different. If the county's gonna take it, then we can see what they do and move forward after that. But personally, I'd like to see us, if we did a moratorium, it would be temporary, very temporary, and come up with something in the next thirty, sixty, ninety days. Uh, cause there's no sense having illegal activity or illegal product that we can sell. And if someone in Casson wants to do that, we should support our local business community rather than have them go somewhere else and buy it. So, and as far as legal liability, reading through the, the recommendations, not as far as the police action or making sure that people are twenty-one, it's just like buying alcohol. If there's an infraction there, it's prosecuted by the county attorney, not the city attorney. So we don't have any legal on our side with that. So if, if it's okay with council, I'd like to have Tim reach out to the county, see if they're planning on doing anything and what their plans are. And then we circle back and really think about where we want this sold, how we're gonna regulate that or if we're going to, or we're just gonna say, the state didn't give any guidance. Like they passed a, a law and made a product legal and then just said, have at it. Um, so if there's any strong feelings on that, I think if you have them now, let's get it out there and.
I, I'm fine with somebody wants to do it. I mean, as long as we follow, they follow the rules and the, why, why not let somebody in the city sell it if they versus going to another city to buy it?
Yeah, and it's a pharmacy license, right, to the Department of Pharmacy or whatever it is to the state. So we'd probably be just like any bar, you know, alcohol license. We could come up with something where we can check to make sure they have the licenser and they're in good standing, just like we did with the food truck stuff and all that, a nominal.
Fee.
Well, just to whatever, if we have any costs in it, just make sure that somebody's legally selling it, like alcohol. And go from there.
Cause I'm sure they're gonna have to carry insurance, just like in.
That's, that's their, yeah, that's their business, so.
I don't wanna lose business. As soon as Rochester allows it, people are gonna go get it. If we don't have something here, people are gonna go there, they're gonna go somewhere else, so.
Sure.
Has Rochester instituted a moratorium?
I don't, I've heard none of them.
Not if I was, I'm avoiding.
I, I believe they are considering it.
But they're already selling in Rochester.
There was one place that was, but then they've said we're gonna have to stop in a few days and that's why. I, I don't know why.
Yeah, I don't know what.
That's what I was wondering if Roch was.
I think everybody's kinda scrambling right now to figure out what's going on, so.
But let's see what the county's doing, if that's okay with everybody.
Yeah.
So we don't repeat the process that they're doing if they're doing something.
Or if they're banning it.
Right. And so.
I don't necessarily wanna be the first to allow it, but I don't wanna restrict it either. So, you know, I, I kinda wanna follow, see what the precedents are and.
Well, if we were the first, we'd have a lot of people coming to town.
Yeah, well, yeah. But in, in the same voice, uh, we're allowing, uh, uh, home breweries.
Right.
The, to go. And they're making alcoholic beverages. It doesn't seem to make, be consistent to restrict this.
Right. Cause that's kind of where I'm at too. It's, it's one of those things now that's been legislated, we made legal by the state. I mean, it's, I don't know. So I'd like to see what the county's doing. If they're not doing anything, then at the next couple meetings, we can hammer out what we wanna have and, and look at some ideas there, maybe see what's going on. That's okay with everybody?
Yep.
So you can take care of that?
Alright, yes.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Uh, new business, budget levy dates changed to December. Okay, so our process here for the, everybody's got the copy of the preliminary, but very preliminary budget in your packet that's in there. Um, and then we've gotta set our dates for our September meeting and then December, we move those around. So let's.
I think Nancy, maybe you wanna run through that memo?
Yeah, well, you're familiar with the process because, you know, it's that time of year. Um, so yes, um, just maybe approved by motion that the preliminary levy date will be September fourteenth. That gives us some room with the second council meeting in September. You choose to change the preliminary levy. And then, um, we need to officially recognize the final levy discussion date for purposes of publication with the county. And that's usually, um, one of the first meetings in December. So that would be our second Wednesday, December fourteenth. And then we'd list December twenty-first as a backup date. But also, the past council has moved the fourth Wednesday's meeting, the second meeting of the month, to an earlier meeting. And so you need to officially approve changing your second meeting date from the twenty-eighth to the twenty-first. And, you know, if you wanna include all those in one motion, that's fine. But again, um, you need to make sure it's an official motion by council to be able to report it to the county in the tax notice.
Okay, thank you. So you recommending September? So you're recommending September 14th, or should we do the 28th for September for the preliminary?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth, okay.
Yeah, just in case you want to change something, you can do it by the 28th then.
Yep, okay. All right, so I'll entertain a motion to approve, to make September 14th a preliminary levy date, December 14th as the levy discussion, approve the final budget, approve the levy resolution, and the 21st as a backup date in case we can't get it done then, and move the regular scheduled meeting from the 28th to the 21st.
All four, yeah.
I'll make that a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thanks. Thanks, Nancy. And then the budget is in there, if you have any comments on that?
Yeah, please, if any of you have any questions, comments about the budget, please give Tim or give me a call about that. You'll have an opportunity to discuss it on the 24th if you so wish, or the night of the preliminary levy as well.
And then, any visibility, I know we always put a big number in here for inflation on health insurance, any word from them on, if we would know before, because last year it was all the way into December, or even after, you know, are we going to have an idea?
We have so far, it's not encouraging, but we redid our, we looked again at our employee numbers, and we are under the 50, so now we are considered a small business, according to the ACA, so somebody has to take us.
Oh, sure, okay.
And we have our insurance agent looking for that, so we are trying to keep the cost down.
Sure.
But if we stay as a large with, we would have gotten 30 to 40 percent.
Increase.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll just wait to see what they find for us, then?
Nancy, what number, I forget, what number did you put in as a place?
20 percent.
20 percent, yeah.
Just one thing I wanted to highlight, and I know Josh is here, too, and he can speak to that, you know, a big chunk of this is a new police officer, and that was something that we committed to that last year, so that's something to keep in mind, is that the public safety budget is a larger than maybe normal increase, but that's what it's related to, is the personnel cost, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions now for Nancy? Everybody knows how to get ahold of her, and she loves to sit down and talk and go over this with you in detail if you want to, so.
Work you through it, yeah?
Yeah, she will.
Any questions?
All right, thanks, Nancy, appreciate it. Event permit, H number two under new business, the American Legion for an event permit for September 24th. They're having a Oktoberfest with the Chamber of Commerce, using the Legion property for some stuff on the 24th of September. And something I learned today is, even though it's September, the Germans celebrate Oktoberfest in September because it's the coming of October, not that it's actually October, so, just if you wanted to know that.
Whereas the Germans in New Ulm, Minnesota, celebrate like four weekends in a row in October, so, you know, go and make sure they get October covered. Yeah, right. We didn't have any issues with it, it sounds like a nice event, hopefully the weather will be good for them, I know that one of the reasons we have these, you know, permits is so that they let us know who's the best point of contact, if there are any problems, but Elizabeth there at the Legion is their main point of contact, so I think that it should be relatively straightforward.
It's all coming weekend, right, that weekend?
Coming is the night.
Through the...
The 23rd.
23rd.
That night before, yep.
A busy weekend.
Some people in town, maybe, yeah, they do a good job with these.
It's a party.
Any other questions, or any comments, or, okay, entertainer motion to approve the permit?
I'll make that motion.
Thanks. Ryan, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Dan. All in favor tonight?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number three, sidewalk maintenance inspection.
Sure, and this is part of our loss control meeting that the safety committee members and myself met with a representative from the league. So what I did was, she sent over an updated kind of version, so I included the previous version that the city had approved, actually, you'll recognize some names on there, I think Dwayne was the mayor at the time then, and you can see what the resolution, the policy we have is pretty straightforward, it's short, it's just a one-pager, and basically it says that 25 percent of initial costs of repairing all subsstandard sidewalk will be assessed to benefiting property owners, and then afterwards, it'll be a 50-50 split going forward. So the draft policy that the league has there is the second document under this heading, and you can see that theirs is quite a bit more involved, and it would require, you know, substantial more time, but it might be something the council would consider to take into account. I know, for example, this year over in Rochester, the city is replacing a large amount of sidewalk, and I think, you know, they're assessing 100 percent to property owners, I don't think that's necessarily want to go in that direction, Rochester's got a little different, you know, setup than we do, obviously, with our taxpayers, but I know that we do have sidewalk in some of the different parts of town that's damaged, that needs to be repaired and replaced, and we do a lot of that during our general maintenance, we grind stuff down, and that's something we can kind of just do, but when it comes to actually starting to replace panels, it's not something we handle internally, and we handle it via contractors, which, as most of you are aware, we've had issues getting contractors to do small projects. We have a project in the Veterans Park area that is still not done, because it's a small project, it's not a priority for contractors, and so what we're looking at doing is possibly doing one large sort of sidewalk project, and what we would do is, we would package all the panels together and say, hey, it's X number of square feet, and we would put that out in the spring, and we would see if somebody would bid on that, and then just do it all. And it might be just a more cost-effective way to do it, but part of that might be in tandem with updates to the policy. So just include that, something the league kind of recommends, we don't necessarily have to make any changes, but something to consider, so.
Has P&amp;Z looked at this at all?
No, they have not reviewed it, so if we'd like to kick that down to P&amp;Z, we certainly can.
I think you should, if it's going to be...
Nightmares are going to come flooding back.
Yeah, remember when you did the first one?
Yeah.
Yeah, I bet you do.
Then you get it all settled.
Yeah.
Perfect.
So, I mean, I like the simple ordinances myself, I mean, the league, they have a lot of really, probably really nice fancy words and good detail there, but I would just encourage P&amp;Z to look at it, if it needs to be changed, fine, if not, I mean, sometimes simpler is better, as long as it covers us, and make sure that whatever there is communicated properly.
Sometimes a little more explanation on why you're charging somebody money goes away.
Sure, yeah, true. So if, let's have P&amp;Z look at that.
Yeah, no, that sounds good, we will move that down to P&amp;Z for September for review. If you're not there, Dwayne, well, I don't know why.
And have we done, or did we do, is the sidewalk study done, Brandon, was that done a couple years ago with Charlie, as far as the ADA compliant?
I was actually going to send an email to Tim, so we can talk tomorrow.
Okay.
We did pass an ADA transition plan that is kind of this, it's kind of a lighter version, it's a federal requirement.
Right.
So that has some of this information in there, so I think incorporating that into the policy.
Sure.
I think it'd be a good idea, in addition to that, our current assessment policy doesn't represent assessing any of the projects. But Tim is correct, the city of Rochester assesses 100 percent unless the sidewalks, like within 10 years, and there's some rate that they may pay if it's a newer sidewalk, and then I think some of the large corner lots, they give them some break on the one side, but generally it falls on the citizens, so that's at least something to discuss between you as a council, so.
We're not Rochester.
I understand that.
Okay.
But right now, we're not assessing anything, so it's the wide spectrum, it's the assessment discussion we have all the time, right? There's different ends of the spectrum, so.
Yeah, if you can get that to him, because I thought we did something with federal requirements that had to be done, so.
We hammered that out a couple of years ago, so that has some of those potatoes, and then we could reference that if we decide to move forward, so we'll get it covered.
All right, thanks, everybody. On to the administrator's report.
Sure, we've got my report included here, we talked about a few of these things already, the budget and LMC, some transportation, I've included a document that you can take a look at, it's, item three under my report is load forecasting, so our load forecast for next year is very similar to our load forecast this year. MISO, which is the mid continental organization, basically, that regulates the power supply and transmission, is sort of stepping up their requirements on reporting, simply because they're seeing tighter and tighter margins for their capacity, so, you know, everyone's, you know, we've been fortunate, and I kind of watch it, because it's these hot days, when I know that we haven't had a problem yet, but it's because the wind's been blowing. So what's going to happen is, you're going to have this perfect storm, where it's going to be a hot day, everybody's going to flip the AC on, and it's going to be a dead wind day, and that's the day that we're going to have the issue, and it's not going to be just us, it'll be rolling blackouts throughout Minnesota. I know Peoples and a couple of the other co-ops, they, you know, you'll see them do their peak energy alert, oh, you hear on the radio, and it'll be, you know, from 2 until 6, they'll say, hey, don't turn anything on. We are looking at some potential virtual peakers, which would be something we could use through some updates in the thermostats folks get, some folks get these Nest thermostats, where some utilities are kind of saying, hey, you opt into this program, we give you a credit, and then, you know, like, what Peoples does is, they'll raise your temperature up to like 78 degrees, you know, during the day, and then, you know, and you can override it, the person can override it in the home so many times during a time period. We aren't looking at that yet officially, but it's something that's flowing around, but they're very tight, because of the solar and wind get much less capacity credit than a coal power plant does, just because the coal power plant is always running, it's a firm power, whereas solar and wind are just not the, they don't get the same capacity credit, so a lot of, I'm, we're hoping, and we're being told that next year, a lot of other communities are bringing their local generation in, so what it is, is it's a catalyst, because capacity has value, some cities, say Rochester, they have a non-functioning generator, and, you know, they said, well, it doesn't make sense to fix it, because it costs $100,000 to fix, capacity's been super cheap, there's been lots of power available, well, now all of a sudden, we know we can sell this capacity to the market by turning this on, and taking credit for it again, because they aren't taking credit for it right now. And so the expectation is that next year, a lot of these folks will bring these to the market, and so it'll actually, what it, it's a weird market, because either capacity is worth nothing, because you don't need it, or it's worth everything, so last year, we paid 15 cents for capacity, and our max capacity is, you know, about nine megawatts is what we need at max, and 15 cents is, it's a minor charge, but this year, we're paying $236 per megawatt for capacity, so it's a huge difference, because it's just like a, sort of a, an L-shaped chart, and so it's kind of fascinating, but anyways, just wanted to provide that for you, you can take a look at that report yourself, then you've got the planning and zoning update, so, and then I have a few other things just to talk about underneath my report there. The counties let us know that there are some default properties in town, and typically the county offers those to the city at first, we get the first to write a refusal for those, and I did talk to Nancy about it a little bit, and it's been some time since we've had defaulted properties, obviously, the housing market's been strong, so most folks have been keeping up with it. There's two of them in town here, you've got one off of Veterans Parkway there, it's a vacant lot, and then there's a, there's a home over at Sixth Avenue Southwest, and both of these are properties the city has an interest, because we have assessed mowing charges to them, we've been taking care of them to, at least to a certain extent, so those will both come, they're both in foreclosure, the county's already taken the properties, so they'll have, they'll be ones that the city council have an option to possibly take. I don't have the official prices that this county's going to charge yet, obviously, the vacant lot was, is worth less than a home is, but those are ones that, just wanted to make you aware, there's two possibilities this fall for that. And then, I know we had talked previously about the ballot language for this fall in November, I just wanted to bring you the, you know, semifinal, it's final, it's final, I'm concerned, of course, we can make changes tonight, ballot language, now that the primary election's done, I need to get this to the county, so I wanted to just have a chance for everyone to just take one last look at it. Nancy worked with Lisa Kramer to determine the financial terms that would be required for this, it's a little bit higher than the preliminary language, partly because the interest rates have risen on any bonds that we would issue, so the amount that's needed to be financed has risen, so you could see the ballot language there, and I don't know if anyone has any questions, I'd certainly be glad to answer those, or if we're looking at anything else. What it comes down to is that the cost of an owner, a home that's valued at $250,000 would be paying about $50 a year in additional property taxes to support the dedication. So, any questions on that?
Any questions or comments for, this is kind of what we asked for, so, only chose. Do you need approval?
Yeah, I think a motion would be appropriate.
Any other questions? Okay, entertainer motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Thanks, Mel, do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ryan, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thanks, Tim, for putting that together.
You bet. And the last item I've got is one that just sort of hit my death today, but it was based on some desire from council, I think we talked about it last year already, there are some projects at the cemetery that we were desirous of completing, one of them we finished earlier this year, or maybe late last year, which was installing the fence on the east side of the property there, a nice screening fence, which I think I've sent pictures out before, it looks really sharp, and it really cleans things up there, too. This was another project, which was a desire to possibly see the drives paved out there at the cemetery, so we've got these folks from SL Contracting who are doing some work in town, and I asked the parking rec supervisor to get some numbers, so you can see the numbers there, and they can be split into pieces, so there's kind of three components to that, they've got one component, which would be the outer loop, one that's the inner loop, and then the crossover drive that connects the two, so you've got $52,465 for the outer loop, you've got $26,943 for the inner loop, and then the crossover's a little over $15,000. Currently, the residual funds that we had after the completion of the fence, I think were right about $33,000.
Right about that.
Yep, so the question is, do we want to proceed with any of this, any of this, or part of it, or do we want to go forward with the whole thing this year, or not? We do know that we have that money in the books that could be used for this, wouldn't require any additional expenditure from the taxpayers, so I'm open to feedback, and just wanted to bring this to you, so you can give me your guidance on it.
Any thoughts? I got my, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, if you split it up into three, it's going to cost you more, because he's going to charge you a fee to come each time, you know, he's got $2,500 equipment mobilization, he's going to charge it each time, plus you'd have to rebid it, he's, you know, so if you were going to do it, I'd say you do it all at once, not split it up, just because of the cost, but that's just...
Brandon, what's your thoughts on cost of the two minutes, sort of, coming down over the next year?
Well, oil's coming down, and crude's coming down, so it could potentially, we're kind of at a really high spike, our spike right now, but we also have a little issue within our industry of not having a lot of competitions, we pay a exorbitant, a certain cost in southeast Minnesota, but I don't think it's going to go any way anytime soon, so it could come down, especially if things slow down, obviously, but who knows, I don't have that crystal ball.
Right. Any thoughts for...
What's the foot traffic right at the cemetery, and do we know, like, on average?
Well, people use it.
Putting $100,000 into something that doesn't have the visitation level, facilitate that.
Well, I guess we don't have cameras out there, I don't think, to know exactly, but I've had complaints from people, because it's, if it's rainy, like it has been, or those paths out there get pretty muddy, and it's, it's not good, I mean, it's one of those things, I mean, somebody made the comment to Tim, you know, why are we spending so much money on people that aren't here anymore? Well, it's kind of a respect thing for the people that came before us, because a lot of the folks that are out there are family members of people that have been here forever, or founders of the community, and people who've done a lot of things, it's just more of a, to me, it's more of a respect thing for those that came before us, and, yeah, is it something we do every year? No, but if we did something like this, it'd be there for 30 or 40 years, and then when people did have an event, or event, a burial or a visitation, they wouldn't have to worry about getting stuck, or getting all muddy, getting in and out of there, so it's more of a respect thing. I'm for doing it all, if we can, if we have a way to pay for it without hitting the levy, and if there's money in the liquor store fund, that seems like a logical place for me, because our liquor profits go back into the community, and this would be a way to honor those that came before us, and as a respect thing, if that's a possibility.
Yes, that's a, I could spot a little bit of money in the stabilization fund, too.
Sure, without hitting levy, yeah. Sure, without hitting the levy, yeah.
But, yeah, you should do a place, asking me the source of financing.
Yeah, so I would, I would say we take the thirty-three that we have for the cemetery, use that, and then between the stabilization and the liquor store fund, uh, that combination to get it done with, without hitting the levy. But that was, that would be, you know, we did the fence the spring, um, and with the upgrade to the loops or the pass or the driveway, I mean, it would be a pretty big improvement for our cemetery, if you go out there at all, that'd be a big deal. I think the family members or the people that do go out there for visitations would appreciate it.
So that's my opinion, anyway, if anybody's got other opinions, or...
I'd say, if we're gonna do it, do it all at once, and if we have the money without affecting the levy, I would make the motion that we go forward and do it.
Okay. Do you need detail on that, Nancy, as far as how much out of each source, or...
Um, well, ideally, yes, but you've mentioned both liquor store and stabilization, so I figured, um, maybe you just wanna split the balance between the two.
Sure, okay. You wanna make your motion, amend your motion?
I'll amend my motion with taking the money, yeah, from both funds sources, or all three, use them left over.
Sure, and then split fifty-fifty between stabilization.
Fifty-fifty, yeah.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ryan, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carries. Thank you, and thank Ronnie for getting that together, too.
Absolutely. I think that's all I have of my report tonight, so if there's any questions, I'd be glad to take those now.
Tim? Thanks, Tim, appreciate it.
You bet.
On to the Engineers' Report, the pay estimate.
All right, thank you, Mayor Council, these typically, and your consent agenda was a late arrival, uh, the time I got it to Tim to get in the council space, I apologize. Uh, pretty straightforward, this is pay application number six, we've been paying McGuire iron as we awarded a project here this winter, um, as you say, the current amount due is a hundred and eighty-five thousand two hundred and fifty, uh, as you can see, we've paid about, I think, about seventy percent of the project, uh, the reason why, um, all the steel's been ordered, and it's on its way, and they're gonna be starting to erect the tower in late August, uh, so there's gonna be some more action out there, uh, as they wrap that tower up here this fall. Um, the site work is in, the foundations in, the water into, into the fairgrounds is in, and they just patched that road, I think, last week, so, um, that work's already been done, and that's just continuation of the project, so ultimately recommending payment.
Okay.
Is the, I see the fire hydrant they just got there along Fifth, isn't that new? It says not in service, is that just because?
Yeah, they, I don't know if they fully have tested that line yet, I'd have to fall back with the mountain, if they've tested and got it all blessed, so that might be, that's probably the reason why.
When you drive by now, all the time.
Sure, it's got a black little ring on it.
It's got the rings, it's not a service, so I was just curious.
It could be, or just shut off, 'cause they haven't ran the rest of the tower up, so it could be off, so...
Didn't want them to leave it like that.
Nope, we'll get it dialed in.
Any other questions for Brandon? I'll move to approve the payment. Thank you, do I have a second?
A second.
Thanks, Mel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carries. Question that came up today for the safer house of school, do we have any more information on when that's gonna be, it'll be done before the end of the construction season, but we don't have the start date or anything like that.
Don't necessarily, actually, I was just coordinating with the contractor to get